With all this budget workshop to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Uh, go call please, everybody's microphone.
Trusty Polish, here, trustee Lathan, clerk Palovich here, treasurer Ellery Summers, here, trustee problem.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skimmy.
Here. Uh, moving forward to the agenda, today's agenda is the public safety. Department, uh, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table to move forward with the agenda and their support by trustee Foley, uh, further discussion? Saying none, uh, all those in favor of adoption of the agenda signify by saying aye. Oppose to say. Adoption has been approved, uh, this is the first opportunity for public comment, if there's any public comment, uh, either in person or online. Uh, please. State your name, uh, online, please use the bottom task bar to raise your hand or send us a message so that we can identify you and listen to comment. Having none online and none in person, uh, we'll move into the agenda, chief, if you'd like to take the podium, uh, you passed out. Public safety.
Okay. Based on figures from last year that we went through and. Figures that I've received from Nathan and Michelle as far as percentages for. Employer Social Security, uh, Medicare, Health, uh, the, uh, HSA. Uh, John Hancock, all those different things, we put the proper formulas, uh, formulas with those percentages in this year. Uh, I based the, uh, salary for full-time staff. With the possible three percent increase on my original thought and then I, uh, times the, uh, numbers by the percentages that, uh, Nathan had given me in our meeting last Thursday. So, the, the numbers far salaries and benefits should be pretty, pretty accurate. Um, I did not have the. Uh, benefits for Blue Cross Blue Shield, but I believe, uh, Michelle had given me that, uh, total prior to forty-two thousand. So I kept that number in there.
That one they gave you for last year's budget?
Uh, no, that, that's what you gave me for this year.
I have a copy.
Last year we were at forty thousand sixty, seventy-two, I believe, and I think you said to go up to forty-two thousand. Obviously, you just got my copy, so is there any questions?
There's a significant increase in the. Uh, John Hancock. Is that just by the, by the payroll numbers or how is that, there doesn't seem to be a big differences in the, in the, uh. Overall costs.
So, yeah, I mean, based on the nine point five percent multiplier that Nathan had given me. That's the total I had come up with, uh, based on, you know. The current or projected salary with a three percent increase and then times it, you might nine point five percent for the down Hancock.
Is, is that the percentage of contribution, Michelle?
It's nine and a half percent.
Okay. So that meant that last year was it, just that there was, the payrolls were that much lower last year or is that not actual?
I don't think that's last year's, that's just proposed budget for last year, so that's.
Right.
Alright, okay.
Um, Nathan, I gave you all my Blue Cross figures.
Well, let's see, last year's John Hancock was started the year off, I'm just looking here.
Sixty-five thousand. So I'm, uh, seven sixteen zero one zero, um, Blue Cross. As I have. And it's been in there is, uh. Proposed for the Blue Cross Healthcare is at sixty-five thousand.
Instead of forty-two.
You said sixty-five, Nathan?
Yes.
That'll change the numbers a bit.
I, I'm sorry, was that healthcare?
Healthcare, two oh five, three, three, six, seven, one, six, point zero, one, zero. Healthcare premium in Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, is, uh, sixty-five thousand dollars.
And so the John Hancock. Um, if I add, we don't, we don't put the paid-on call on the John Hancock, right? If I goes. Uh, the suggested payrolls. Unless I did something wrong, let me just double check. That would be thirty-eight thousand seventy-three. I'm not sure, the forty-four doesn't make.
You wouldn't put forty-four in there for the John Hancock. Cause that's the paid-on calls.
Yeah, no, I, John, uh, paid-on call is, is Bright House, right?
Yes.
So, so we have four hundred and seven thousand dollars in. Projected payroll. So that'd be about thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. So thirty-nine thousand. Percentage is the HSA?
It's not a percentage.
Not a percentage, it's thirteen hundred for a single, twenty-six hundred for a family.
Okay, that's right, so that twelve thousand, uh, numbers is. I don't know what that, is that?
Well, we have two families and a single. But we're gonna be hiring another person. So this doesn't match what you've got populated here.
No, you want me to actually just print out, uh, public safety? Then we can overlay it with what Marcus presented. That may be the.
It might be easiest, because this column of what was proposed last year.
Yeah.
So, this is the two twenty-eight.
But it was printed on two-nine.
Right, but, but even with that being said. Uh, isn't this where it started out the year, right here?
That's it, the fiscal year, not.
We're not using that John Hancock, it has zeros in it.
Yeah.
We're using.
Unit shares pension. Is how the one that's populated starts.
Don't need to grab the cap. No, that's not the one we use, unit chairs, that's the old one before the.
We had two. In there, one is be deleted. The dead one.
Yeah. I think Nathan's printing something for us to all go off. Yeah, I don't. Cause this is proposed.
Right here. Sort of unlabelled.
This is in John Hancock.
Okay.
Yeah. So you don't wanna use these numbers because were these before the. Chart of conversion? Are you asking me? Yeah, you know, we're.
Yeah, those, I'm just gonna print out what, what we have.
Oh. Maybe, I don't know, I'd have to look, I didn't think about it, yeah.
If this is the current one, there was nothing on that line.
It's not the current one, if there's zero on it.
Okay, so we have one that says John Hancock and one says pension, they both have zeros.
Why did I give this to you, Mark, or, or something, is that why?
That's, that was the format.
Oh, okay.
So I will.
There probably is a lot easier format someplace, uh.
Yeah, see, this is John Hancock, this is all the way through it is zero. So you're not even looking at that, that is before the, the chart of conversion. So this is the pension that we're currently using.
Okay, so it would have been cleared out the year thirty thousand eight point two.
I don't know if it started out the year at eight, that is where we are budgeted right now. There could have been amendments to it throughout the year, yeah.
So I took this number, I believe, well. Well, let me see here, let me get back to my other sheet. Somehow or another, I got the. Total of twenty-eight thousand, seven oh five. That's the wrong number then, cause that said John Hancock.
I'm printing out site-specific two oh five.
Yeah, are we just gonna go through each line by one?
Yep.
Okay.
We need this. To look through these things, I realized that.
I don't know why she thinks that these were done before the conversion. They weren't the same to me, so.
Yeah, cause you've got the, you've got the ones that we added, they're the.
Do you think that these were before the? I, I don't know, I don't, I just. They, I mean, everything we run now should all be different numbers, I think this is, is this a spreadsheet that you used last year? Okay.
But I changed the number when she added the, uh. GLs for, uh, my requested GLs that I have on there for like the.
Yeah, there were a few ones I had, so the number should be right.
Right, the number.
But on the hand, we had nothing in the. Piece of paper I got here, we had nothing.
We did the chart of. Yes.
Is that just so that it becomes just generic?
So that's now proposed for. Last year was.
So that's just one of those little, we had a few of those little glitches and that was one. We're using John Hancock as our pension, yes, but it's on here. Well, one is zero, so.
Alright, so we'll just sort of set this one aside.
Yep, just please focus at the one at hand, um.
Why don't we start, you wanna start with the revenue?
To everybody and. Time, yeah, we're gonna start at revenue, we're gonna work pages one through three. And so we're starting at two oh five, zero, 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 four oh two, uh, zero, zero, uh, millage recruitment. Um, but CPI, uh, that is best guess, uh, of increase in taxable value. Um, and so. Now you have, uh, the format, chief.
I see what you're looking at, yep.
Okay.
The, the original numbers that I'd gotten from you was five sixty-four, ninety-five, forty-five C. And I'm looking at five ninety-nine, six fifty for the millage then, is that correct, for the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed?
That's for this upcoming proposed fiscal.
Okay.
So we have, uh, county first, the, the only other revenues, obviously, the, the millage, uh, sunset this year. Um, that was corrected, uh, prior to this meeting. State grants is, that was this, uh, currently, that's, uh, the first responder, that's why that's populated under five, four, three, zero, zero, zero. Uh, next revenue stream of thirty-nine thousand is the, um, allocation through the county first responder, um, program. Um, and then, uh, the existing, uh, service contract for auto aid on the nine square miles of Maple Ridge Township at twenty-five hundred. Till that can be revisited with, uh, as a potential increase. Um. That really is pretty much the, the summation of one point five mils of recruitment for operations. Uh, the county allocation and the contract for services in regards to. Um, and obviously the pass-through for the, uh, liaison officer at six nine nine zero three zero. Um, when those are, uh, as per Sheriff Smith's last email, that is. The number that we're looking at coming into this year.
But it could change when their fiscal year changes.
Yeah, that could, and it probably would drop off, I'm sure, a percentage of three percent.
So that, that is in the form of a check to us, right, or is that in the form of a reduction of our cost?
We need to do a check from the general fund.
To the public.
To the public safety fund, and then we do a check for the public safety fund to the county.
Alright, alright. So this is just.
Cause that's what the auditor's like.
Alright.
So, yeah. So, starting on the first expenditure of. Two oh five, three, three, six, seven, oh, two, zero, one, zero, chief deputy chief. And I'm just gonna go along as if there's any amendments or corrections, uh, please state them and I will make, uh, say corrections moving forward.
So do we adjust these? Numbers to represent that which the chief has provided with, with some adjustments?
Well, those are his last recommendation that he was, that he put together.
Here.
Yes, and the audit is just, it's a bad, it's, it's just on a, a free chart of conversions.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll just have to sort of work through it.
What we're looking at, just as I'm working in VSNA, uh, we have a revenue stream interdepartment of six hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. And a total expenditure of one point one nine two. Uh, five seventy-six, uh, with a deficit of five twenty-one, eight twenty-three.
Alright, so. As we go down these. There, there were some adjustments that are, uh, uh, different.
So now, now chief can go from, with his recommendations for expenditures. Uh, from this point, I mean, the revenues are the revenues. So.
Okay, uh, I guess we'll start with line item, chief deputy chief salary, uh, seventy-three, uh, six hundred. And that was figured in with all the different multiplying benefits that, uh, Nathan had given me. Uh, six point two for employee social, you guys want me to go through all them, six point two for employee social security?
Well, no, you'll go through social security and Medicare when we do that GL line.
Okay, alright, that, that's how these original numbers came up and then I put them into the GLs, so.
That number's just your salary.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, uh.
What a percentage of increase is that?
It's one thousand dollars over last year. The in-house training here, I'm not sure that that's on your long spreadsheet, Nathan, if that's right, but, uh, I'm trying to find it on my sheet.
I mean, do you have a proposed?
Yes, I do.
At zero, so what is?
I'm just trying to find it in my, uh, on my spreadsheet here.
And that's a pro.
That's a wages we would pay for in-house training for people to do in-house training, it's not for us to pay somebody to come and do in-house training.
Right.
I don't think.
Your, your next expenditure would be salary payable full-time officers.
Alright, salary payable full-time officers, I put a, uh, three percent increase in there, uh, proposed on the, uh. Shirttails of what I've heard. That might be going on for contract docs, so just to cover myself, I put that three percent increase in there, bringing that up to three thirty-four, one seventy. Um. Also, moving on to two oh five, three, three, six, seven, oh, two, zero, five, zero, paid-on-call salary.
Hold on.
Just one, one second there, Mark, uh, because. I think, and I don't have a calculator, I didn't bring my phone.
That's gonna be good.
Thank you.
So that. I just did that, it's three thirty-four, one seventy-one. Three hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and fourteen cents.
Did you say thirty-three or three thirty-four, one seventy-four?
Uh, three, three, four, one seventy, one point one four, so, one seventy-one.
Okay, I was a buck fourteen difference than you, so I'm not sure what happened there.
Darn close.
Yeah.
Three twenty-four, one seventy-one.
Three thirty-four.
Three thirty-four.
Three, three, four, one seven one.
Three, three, four, one seventy-one.
And fourteen cents.
I hear an echo.
So that's a six dozen, then sixty-five hundred dollars.
Are you gonna stop us?
I will, and all the corrections I will have, actually, with these three pages, I can print out. On conclusion of today, just to keep it clean. So your next, uh, expenditure would be, uh, seven oh two, zero, five, zero, paid-on-call by your salary.
Yep, uh. I, I'm suggesting that we, uh. Do a ten percent increase with paid-on-call, uh, for the next fiscal year.
Is that because you want to give them raises or you expect a higher volume?
Both, I, I'm, we're been, we've been getting better turnout, uh, but I also would like to address this board down the road. Uh, and Nathan and I have spoken about this, uh, quite a bit, uh, about actually increasing that. A different formula, if you will, uh, to keeping that response level up, um. Looking at a little bit more for the initial hour, for to get people there. And then we would, uh, you know, that would be for the first two hours, they would get paid a little bit bigger stipend. But. In any event, it's a little bit more incentive to get them out of bed at two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning, you know what I mean, cause we're gonna need their help for sure. So, I mean, if they're gonna come in and cover a shift for us, we certainly wouldn't be able to give them that wage. Uh, that's something that would have to be determined, uh, cause we certainly can't have them really making more than our full-time staff if they're covering a shift for us. In, in my opinion.
But they're not getting benefits.
Well, that is true.
Michelle, you can take yours back, Michelle's gonna.
Yeah, so I just bumped it to forty-four, but.
Yeah, that's, I, I would say maybe a budget office supplies and behind a calculator, cause I actually came up with a completely different number usually.
Social Security is six point five?
Six point five, yes.
And I pretty much use this.
Michelle, or, or, or paid-on-call, uh, uh, W two?
Yes.
So that'd be twenty-nine thousand, three sixty-five.
Twenty-nine. Three sixty-five. Point four two.
Right, that might now.
What?
Which they paid on calls, do they get ten ninety-nines or?
Are they contractual or are they, uh, salary?
Well, Michelle will be right back with her, uh, paid-on-call or W twos or ten ninety-nine?
W twos.
Yeah.
Social Security, Medicare, everything.
So we're taking out.
So Steve actually came up with social security as twenty-nine, three sixty-five.
Sixty-six, five, uh, six thousand.
Okay.
Five hundred and fifty-one.
Yeah, so we have, uh, Medicare costs and seven eleven point zero, 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 six thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. Uh, moving down to pension, that is where the John Hancock is currently housed, and we had scheduled thirty-three thousand.
I don't think that'll be right, so it'll be based upon four oh seven, 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 zero. Times nine point five percent is forty, uh, forty thousand.
I got thirty-eight.
Wait a second, what have I done wrong here?
I got thirty-eight.
Basically upon four hundred and seven thousand, seven, seven, zero.
I did the three thirty-four, one seventy-one, plus seventy-three.
For pension.
Four, four hundred and seven thousand?
Yeah, seven hundred and seventy.
Yes.
So, so seven fourteen point zero three zero is thirty-nine thousand, which we actually, and then actually I had it populated. In, uh, the wall GL two, I'm gonna delete that.
What, line item number, where you're talking?
I'm gonna reprint this out for everybody.
What was the number one, social security, would we change seven to?
Twenty-nine thousand, three sixty-five.
Twenty-nine.
So this number's right down here, the thirty.
Yeah, I know, but I, before I printed this, I, I populated it.
And the Medicare was about sixty-five, seventy-one.
Seventy-one, fifty-one.
Okay, maybe it is fifty-one.
So, six thousand, five hundred and fifty-one.
Six thousand five, and like I said, I will print this out before everybody departs with the directed. Uh, numbers, uh, currently we are at expenditure GL two oh five, three, three, six, seven, one, six, zero, one, zero. Health insurance premium Blue Cross Blue Shield at sixty-five thousand dollars. Paid-on-call insurance at zero, unit shares of John Hancock and this, um, I've already corrected that. That was the old GL that is not populated.
Throw a quick question at you on, um, so last year we had budgeted according to the long sheet. Thirty-five, four for Blue Cross, do we know why we had such an increase?
More families on it.
Okay.
More families in anticipation of being fully staffed.
Okay, I got you.
There's one thing we've learned about Blue Cross. Unit share, yeah, it will go away after, what, one more year, two years before it's. That's the unfortunate thing, we can't delete certain GLs that have been populated in the past until we have about three years of a budget second.
Or we can amend it to zero, right?
Right, which it is, yeah.
That's, that's, so this thirty-nine thousand should be zero.
I've already, yeah, because I, before I printed this.
Okay. That was my question.
Yeah. So, moving forward to the HSA contribution currently populated, uh, that's, uh, GL seven two zero point zero, zero, zero. Populated at ten thousand dollars.
That's more than double.
Um.
Well, because we have families on it.
Okay.
Uh, the next GL is two oh five, three, three, six, seven, two, two, point zero, 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 life insurance Dearborn, um.
Doesn't seem reasonable if that would go down if you're, if you're adding, of course.
But this is.
Yeah.
Just this part of it is paid-on-call.
No, this is just full-time people. So, seven hundred and fifty dollars, I think it should be a thousand because we're already at nine twenty-two.
And I put in twelve hundred on my suggested, so. You're saying a thousand, Michelle?
Seven, oh, yeah.
Yeah, that typically doesn't go up very much.
Most years it doesn't even go up.
So, next GL, seven two three zero, or seven two three point zero, 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 workers' compensation. Um.
Our current rate is like nine point four percent.
I have it currently populated at thirty-seven five, would that be light?
I, I think you, if you did it the same as the John Hancock, that's. Oh, wait, that would be light, cause you have to, everybody's on it.
Yeah.
So if you've got four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in payroll, ten percent would be forty-five thousand, so nine percent would be somewhere around forty. One thousand, forty.
You provided this forty.
I'd put it in my budget as forty-two thousand.
I would be more comfortable at forty-two.
Are we going with forty-two or what is the recommendation?
What, what did you say that, was that the final? Michelle, did you know if that was the final rate?
No, that's the beginning rate, then it goes all those.
Oh, yeah, wow, and so, um. I should probably get a whole equipment and have them.
Should we just populate it currently just at forty-five thousand?
I think so, I think so.
Forty-five.
So, next GL is seven two four zero, 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 uniforms.
Yeah, and I. Wasn't sure where that was going, cause I know that you have that in contractual talks, so I don't know, I just basically. Uh, went off a last year, uh. Keeping it roughly the same, I don't know what that looks like, cause I'm not involved with those talks, so I kept it about the same.
We're showing this budget at four thousand, but you said we went over that or?
Yeah. Cause right now it's populated at sixty-five hundred.
Right, and I, I kept, I kept it the same, cause I just didn't know what we had, what we had in store for that GL.
Oh.
It's gonna be more.
Oh, it's. Well, potentially, yeah.
I think it should be more like ten thousand.
Alright.
If we were at four, about sixty-five hundred, should be good, right?
Should, I mean, we're not. So that we'll leave it at sixty-five hundred for time being. Uh, moving forward to seven two zero, zero, one, zero copies. Uh, five hundred dollars.
And I, basically, I had to put it at four hundred, but we probably should keep it at five hundred, I'm guessing.
Well, we're gonna be going back through because currently, I mean, we, we have, uh, I, I, I deficit of four hundred and ninety-three thousand.
But you have to take out the, the equipment.
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna be what's kind of skews that number, cause we don't have a revenue to offset the expenditure for the millage request. And so we're gonna be. And so we're gonna be coming into the expenditure side with what we have remaining from the equipment millage plus. The sale of ambulance coming forward, so that's gonna.
Are we gonna be selling two ambulances though?
Well, we sold one, we have one more to sell.
Yeah, but the old.
But that's not the village.
So that could go to operating.
Anything that the millage monies were utilized has to go back into those GLs. So, so then just to, for food for thought, that's, that's part of why this number is exacerbated. Uh because we don't have the revenue to offset those expenditures. So copies five hundred, um but do you think that it should be four hundred? Cause.
Yeah, I, I mean.
I mean, you have any idea how much you spent last year on it?
Haven't reconciled with the company yet, uh for each department.
In papers.
Cause we haven't had that a year yet, so.
We'll, we'll leave it at five hundred.
Yeah.
How about that?
Yeah.
Um next, uh GL seven two zero point zero two zero for your operational supplies. It's populated currently at four thousand.
What would that be?
Who we spent?
This year we've spent two thousand, four dollars.
Up till now.
Did you wanna know what that would be?
Generally speaking.
Basically, anything, if we need a spanner wrench, we need this or that. I put that into operational supplies, the small ticket items.
Wouldn't be like medical supplies.
No, cause we have a different line item for that.
Yeah.
Yep, so that's some miscellaneous ancillary type stuff that we need to get, and that's the column, I take that out of.
Anywhere from like a coffee machine to a wrench?
No, not even a coffee machine, uh but wrenches, if we needed something like that, yes.
This is strictly for fire equipment, not rescue or any other.
Yeah, pretty much, I mean, if it's medical, I have a medical line item that I pull from for that.
What, what can you think of off the top of your head that's gonna need um? Those supplies that would be essentially double. What, are there things, are, are there things that were worn to the point where they need to be replaced, or is it just a um? Best estimate?
Yeah, I mean, anything, extension cords, whatever we need, uh you know, plugs, you know, different things like that, that.
And so last year we spent two thousand, little over two thousand. Ended in what, two months, three months?
End of March, thirty-first.
So probably not gonna spend two thousand dollars in a couple of months. I wonder if that.
That was. Steve, I mean, Mark.
Okay, so basically, anything that we've done in the fire service has gone up fifteen to twenty percent. So, I, last year we were budgeted at, um let me see here.
Three thousand.
Three thousand, and I brought it up to four.
But you spent two.
Yeah.
Right.
So probably not gonna spend over twenty-five hundred total.
Wouldn't think so, I wonder if we left it at three thousand, just to be safe. Of course, of course, I suppose to be safe, but even at four.
Yeah.
Work it down from there.
That's what I would prefer to be at.
But budgets are, well, budgets are living documents.
Constitutions are that.
So what are we doing, leaving it or changing it?
I think, right, I mean, we can always come back, we will be having one more final overlay of all principal funds uh to a budget hearing. Um so we can maybe on your copies make a mark of. Maybe, is that something we come back to for a reduction, uh but moving forward, I think. That's.
Fire operation.
Yes, just so that you know. I think we'll just move forward, we'll leave it currently at four. Uh but as an item that we can discuss a little further and moving forward into the future, so the next item is seven two eight point zero, 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 computer hardware.
Good replacement.
Yeah, uh talking with. All the uh folks from ten-ten, just my computer alone, they're gonna try and get a price upgrade. They have to do something different for the hard drive, cause it hasn't been upgraded in such a while, he's gonna be sending me a quote for that, so I don't know what the.
Computer's still in the server room?
No, we've already gifted every new computer to the fire department.
Okay.
And we gifted some back, some of the old ones. You mean, it's not like free pay?
Mark, you wrote on here, upgrade to laptop.
Yeah, and I don't know what that expenditure is gonna be, if he said that something can be fixable. Uh, cause he was actually checking out the network today. And he goes, oh my god, it takes a half hour to log on to your computer, he goes, you have to do something on the hard drive. I'm not a computer tech, so I don't know anything about it, so send me a price quote.
Yeah, so we'll leave that populated at two, uh medical operational supplies is the next expenditure, seven two zero, 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 zero. We, it's currently populated at ten K, is that remaining on your newest?
Uh, I'm recommending fifteen thousand, cause we have one more AED that we're trying to get a grant for. But if we get that AED, that'll complete our fleet, so everything's identical, including the one on this township wall. Everything in the fleet, so pads are interchangeable, we can get on the cities, we can switch over to the city if we have a cardiac arrest. All they do is unplug from us and plug theirs in, uh it's not a bunch of guessing, uh but that's one bigger ticket item that we're gonna do. And then our normal, uh, then our normal medical, sorry.
How much is an AED?
Forty-six, forty-seven hundred probably right now.
Wouldn't that be considered equipment, not a supply? Supplies are something that's more disposable, used once and get rid of it. So is that really would do an AED under?
Equipment is how I'd also think about that, and so then there again. If that's, if we're efficient with one AED, what is your equipment budget for the remainder of this year? Because maybe if. No, well, right now we're talking about seven two nine zero, is there medical operational supplies?
Yeah, 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 so, so, so we had it, we had it at ten, he said an AED would be about five, so it'd be back to ten.
But an AED is more equipment, not supply, so I don't think we should budget for it in that GL.
No, I, I understand, so in, in his budget, it was fifteen thousand.
Correct.
Which would include the AED, so I'd say leave it at ten.
Right, I agree.
So it is remaining.
Yeah, C A D should be budgeted in a different GL.
Oh, I get that, but we've gone from. Budget last, well, that's activity.
So our activity, yeah, I mean, the past two years of full activity of, of. Have, you know, ninety-two hundred, uh eighty-five dollars, uh eight thousand, four hundred and five dollars, current activity of three thousand, twenty-six dollars. Um and an anticipated uh proposed budget of ten thousand, um and so.
Seems high.
That seems. I mean, so I guess, to that, to that point at ten K. Knowing that there might be a five thousand dollar shuffle down to equipment as a potential uh for this discussion. What is, I mean.
So, the medical supplies are in constant need of being replaced and changed because they have dates on the supplies. This is gonna be an endless, ongoing purchase, so. The actual expenses from last year and actual expenses that we have from this year, and I will tell you that. Basically, just about anything they come and ask me to get unless it has it, it needs a date on it, they've been told no this year. Uh because I've been trying to make sure that we have enough money to make it through the end of the year and see where we're at. So, we're gonna be in that routine of needing to get some more supplies medically, and they don't go down in price, they continue to just go up. Uh, everything's taken a fifteen to twenty percent increase for this year.
Do we try to uh coordinate those efforts with other services? For example, uh the city, the, the Wilson Township.
I can, I can stop you, yes, we use the same account as the city of Alpena. Uh for a majority of our supplies, so we, we get a discount for purchasing our supplies at the same time that they do. So, uh and we're, and Chief Edmonds and I are working on some more of those things that we can try to. Cut out some duplication and stuff down the road, so.
We've been talking a little bit about uh, uh the duplication of runs. Uh and, and when we do those duplication of runs, uh do we use many supplies when they go on duplication of runs?
Yeah, if, if we're there first, uh. We start putting the supplies on them, it's, if it's, if it's a cert, you know, collars that they need to be replaced. We can typically get that back from the countywide ambulance service, uh but gauze and different things like that, occlusive dressings, whatever we might use. We have to. Put back into the saddle, if you will.
So if the, so if we uh reduce our services because of the duplication of efforts, then those numbers would go down.
Yeah, a little bit, for sure.
Okay.
Moving forward into seventeen-nine, zero, one, zero, office supplies, uh currently populated at one thousand dollars. And you have it in your newest spreadsheet at two thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, uh, just trying to keep ahead of the curve on things that are uh, uh always going up in price on everything. Um, I mean, realistically, we could probably. I'm sorry?
That's a big increase.
Yeah.
About fifteen.
So, so this, so this exercise is gonna be, where can you cut fat, where fat can be cut in office supplies? I mean, medical supplies, obviously, we don't wanna cut those things, things that are truly ancillary. But when we see an, an average over two years of complete utilization of office supplies. The highest over two years that you have fifteen hundred, so you have an average of seven hundred and fifty dollars annually.
I'm, I'm good with fifteen, I mean, if that's acceptable by you folks.
No, I'm, I'm saying that you have an annual average of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So what are you saying, more like a thousand, leave it at a thousand, or leave it on our sheet?
And again, I, I would, I would tend to leave it at a thousand, if we need to shuffle things, then we shuffle things.
Yeah, given a, given a fifteen to twenty percent increase in, in costs, if that's accurate, then we're still below.
We're still covering it at a thousand. Uh, full-time P P E, uh seven three zero, 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 um. At, originally at fifteen, and now you have it in as twenty?
Yep, uh in my strategic plan for equipment replacement, uh what's happened in the past? And a lot of departments are finding this out, even if they get a grant or whatever, they're buying a bunch of equipment at one time. Uh, let's say they get SCBAs and they get a big grant, so they replace all their SCBAs. Well, what's happening at that time, twenty years or ten years from now, they all expire at the same time, and unless you can get another grant. You're sitting there where you've gotta replace this many pieces of equipment, so I wanna put a stagger in there that we replace five sets a year. Uh, you know, helmets all, from head to toe, uh we're getting very close on all of our gear right now. I'd like to get a jump on, you know, to yearly get, replace five sets for full-timers and five sets for. Yeah, and this isn't gonna go every year, uh but I gotta get, we gotta get a rotation pattern started, so we're not, all of a sudden we have to buy twenty-five sets of turnout gear.
But in that same theory, you're loading it on the front, if, I guess my thought is. Five sets, currently we have five full-time people looking for a sixth, so we're gonna be in that same predicament of now all five sets that we just purchased.
So, here's what I gotta tell you, the previous full-timers here all had two sets. The carcinogens that are in our gear, you're required to wash that, that gear. And they're not to wear, after they get done with the fire, they're not to wear that gear until it's been washed, we have nothing for them to change into. So we need to start that cycle as well, so, uh also in my equipment budget, I've put in there for a washer extractor. Uh, cause we don't have one currently, and we are supposed to have one to wash that gear properly.
Don't we have it on Southside?
No, they're just a regular household washing machine, these washer and extract, extractors are uh designed to take out. All the bad stuff, if you will.
So.
So I certainly appreciate the logic, it makes, it makes sense to be staggered sorts of things, but um. As Nathan has said. If we, if we have five people and we, and we replace five sets, then we're just. Kicking the can down the road, so we gotta get five again later on, and so. And so they, they lasted, generally speaking, how long?
Ten years.
Ten years.
So, and that was gonna be an in-depth conversation with the fire committee, uh so I can, to talk about that a little bit more, and we could get a better plan. Uh, but.
So five sets would be seventeen-five, and so, so. If we have a full complement of say, seven or eight people.
Right.
Um, then you could, you could essentially take those. That thirty-five hundred times.
So here, here's the stagger, Steve.
Yeah, you can.
We currently have gear that'll be expiring within the next year or two, maybe three. So now, if we buy the second set for the full-timers, and that's what we, we basically, I'm, I'm looking at doing, okay? This number won't come back for another, basically, five years.
No, I, I, no, I.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I get that, I'm just trying to think of a way that, that in five years you don't have to buy.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I also have paid on calls that have to do that.
Three, three, three. And then when, you know, stagger that so that every other year you didn't have the expense.
Right.
But that, you'd only have to buy three sets every other year, that's where you're coming.
And, and we currently, and we currently do have. Two or three sets that are still owed us from back in, the last time we ordered them, we've had our guys in loaner gear. So.
What does that mean? Have we still gotta buy them or we bought them?
We, we, we budgeted for them, we order, we ordered them back in, what was it, October of last year? And that's how long this company has held us out to dry, basically.
But they're giving us longer there, but they just haven't filled their order yet.
Correct.
Yeah.
Then one of the sets of gear that they sent was the wrong sizing, so that had to be sent back, and uh.
So when they give us longer here, we're not like leasing it.
We're not paying for it.
So day one starts when we get their new gear.
That's.
So, so you could actually, so.
It's been approved and budgeted, yes, that's correct.
I, I, I'm gonna suggest that we take that down to eleven thousand, which would represent three. And then every, basically every other year by three.
I also have wildland gear needs on there as well, often right.
I just assumed that was, is that a, a separate cost?
That's a separate cost. So you're at about six fifty per set.
How long is those, those?
Ten years, the industry standard's ten years for any turnout here.
Kind of here.
Grassland. A wildland.
So. I bought the full-timers hard hats last year, so I'm trying to stagger some of these expenses, but uh. You know, and the goal is, is that our full-time staff will have their assigned gear. The paid-on call will kinda be a free-for-all, there'll be coveralls in the back of the truck and they can grab whatever size they need, uh. But they're not in them every day like the full-time folks are, so, and having your stuff ready to go when you're a full-time firefighters.
So, I appreciate the logic, I really do, and it, it makes sense, but.
And I, and I really would like to talk more about that with the fire committee, so we can really hammer it out.
Yeah, well, you guys hammer it out, right now currently, seven three zero, 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 uh at eleven. Plus six fifty for three is funded currently, and we can come back to it at twelve-five. Paid on call P P E is the next GL, and is that gonna be the same si- similar scenario of getting on a rotating, rotating basis?
Right.
Could, now let me ask you this. So that it's maybe easier to budget over a protracted period of time. Could that roughly twelve thousand, five hundred again be next year? Would you have, would they last, so that you're always at twelve-five?
So currently, I've got.
Always rotating new stuff in.
Currently, to answer that question, kind of, I've got, as, Hassan's gonna, as, he developed our access program. And he's currently working on giving me actual data as to when do these things expire, how many sets are gonna expire at this time? And then I can bring that information back to the fire committee and give a little bit better.
Well, and I, and I gave you the template of a C, C I D from water, that you can actually use it in an.
So we just got that last week and.
No, yeah, no, I, like I said, I think, I think this makes sense, but.
So, paid on call in that same theory, then would that be a, a reduction from, cause you have it then there again. Of five sets plus wildland, would we keep it consistent at twelve-five?
I think he's, I think.
What I'm trying.
We put that up though, that's.
Yeah, what I'm trying to say is, is that maybe we buy one set and then sort of stagger. I'm just trying to look at numbers, because we know, we know we have to come back, we, we know we'll have to.
Yeah, I, I don't think one's a practical number at all, I think you're gonna get caught with your, literally your pants down at the end of this, cause we're getting really close. All of our helmets are about to expire, I think this year, if I'm not mistaken, so I have to make a, a helmet purchase. Uh, so, when I, when I consider P P E, I, it's not just bunker pants and boots and stuff like that. We have people in boots that are just crap, to tell you the truth, they need boots, nothing's been replaced.
So then that begs the question, the five sets of bunker gear, thirty-five hundred dollars includes everything.
Head to toe.
Alright, alright, and so. All right, all right, and so, yeah, I'm just trying to look at. Leveling off the budget.
I understand that.
So that what what you're basically saying is that next year, if we spent the twelve thousand five hundred twice. Next year's would be zero.
It would be in one of the columns for sure, but the paid-on call column, we s- we still have more than. Five employees, if you will, that are gonna need to to get gear. You understand what I'm saying?
I I understand, but I'm trying to live to your standard of of staggering this. So that we don't find ourselves ten years from now in exactly the same position.
For the sake of argument, I'm I'm okay if we we do the three and three. Uh, try it, see what happens. If we have to. Ask for something different, then we'll have that, and and I would really like to visit that more in our fire committee, so we can.
Fine.
Get down to the brass tacks, to tell you the truth.
Them both on. Five for full-time and paid-on call P P E. And that's so getting back to that, uh, in twenty eighteen, the township bought ten brand-new sets of. Bunker gear.
Well.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Well, we really wanted five.
Yeah.
Well, see, that's what I'm trying to avoid, that we don't have to lump ten sets of gear, because, oh my God, rock made it.
Ten sets, we don't know where they are.
Yeah, and that was pre me, so I can't help you with that.
So eight oh one uh zero 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 professional and contractual services.
What is that?
That is anything versus R and R for doing uh.
Gotcha.
Um, and I've been, I've repeatedly say this is where you will fund for a grant writer. Or specific grants.
How much do we have in there right?
Um, right now, currently in what's before you is fifteen, and then this version of Mark's is eighteen thousand.
So what are you gonna use that for?
So, obviously, we have bio care for our physical uh test on all of our firefighters.
That would not come out of that line.
It would come out of that line, uh.
Professional and contractual services, it would come under under physical.
Not last year, we did it through, we did it through professional contractor, cause there was an actual contract, so Nathan having put it in professionals contract.
We did a G L of budget adjustment and moved it.
So then the the physicals, uh, column, the way I understood it, that's for a new employee, full-time hire. Uh, that has to go to the hospital and do the township physical, that's why that line I have separate, uh, the.
I think I think it all goes under physicals, and I think we did a budget adjustment. I'll have to check that out.
Check it, we can come back to that.
Okay, thanks. In addition, air sampling, uh, ladder testing, S C B A fit testing, flow testing, all that stuff would come out of. Professional contract.
We have to do ladder testing every year?
Every year.
You have Lexi pole on there.
Yeah, and that's Lexi pole is one of those items that I'm waiting to hear back from my training officer.
Well, and the likelihood of that's getting chopped, because it's not being utilized, otherwise we'd know how great it is.
Well. So so it was good while we first got it, but now we have a training officer that asks, that is actually doing training and people are getting what they need. So it isn't as critical for us to have Lexi pole, and I told Jim if we do need it, I needed a letter of why we need it. How much we used it.
So just just in that era of in the conversation, uh, previously it was funded at fifteen, you have it at eighteen, knowing that. Bio care is probably gonna be going to a different G L and Lexi pole's not in that, so you have air ladder and S C B A.
And grant writer.
Grant writer.
Um, let me see if I got it in my notes here, hang on.
Hoses every third year.
Oh.
I only had so many spaces on the sheet there, so there was other things that I had that that come out of that as well.
Ladder is annual.
Ye- yes, um. Fit testing host or uh flow testing of all the S C B A's, I think I said that, um.
But you never know on a grant writer, depends on how much your grant is, if they take a percentage.
It's an ebb and flow, each grant writer has a different format of what that looks like. Uh, in all honesty, a lot of even federal grants nowadays actually now will cover administrative function, where you can actually self-return.
Which is a big change.
Which is a massive change in in state and federal uh opportunities there, so.
I mean, I guess what I would probably suggest.
I guess let define it further at fire committee.
Yeah, and I think you and I should talk a little bit more about it too on.
I'm gonna, I'll leave it for now at fifteen, but there wasn't that much of a disparity, but we booked this pretty much in conversation, removed a couple of things off the list. Not saying that there won't be things added to it, um, but we'll leave it at fifteen legal, uh, and everybody's, I think this can be reduced to a thousand. Uh, maybe even five hundred, but we need to have something in there, because the general fund has been. Forever just always banned for site-specific.
I put it up eight hundred under our conversation this afternoon on mine. If that's.
Eight hundred doesn't buy much if we needed it.
Uh, at our thankfully, at our contractual rate.
About about four and a half hours, so you're doing a thousand.
We're going to eight hundred.
Eight hundred. Uh, hydrant rental, we've removed that. Um, non-emergency billing, eh, uh, move that. Uh, janitorial supplies, uh, we had that twenty-one hundred.
That's what you have.
Still, uh, remains constant with uh the last spreadsheet provided.
It seems like a lot, eight hundred dollar increase over what they use so far this year. Are we doing some major cleaning?
There's just the endless supply of cleaning supplies that we need to have, uh.
Are we buying them at thirty-two ounces a piece, or are we buying about five gallons a piece?
Is that toilet paper and paper towels and all that too?
Yeah, that's everything, uh. Some of it we can, some we can't. I can't even find toilet bowl cleaner for the guys to have toilet bowl cleaner right now. I've looked all over this town. They want the works bathroom cleaner, cause it's the only thing that works, so, uh, also my wife uses it at home too, so. Wha- what do I say? I can't find it, I can't find it.
Ask your wife where she's finding it.
Uh, admire admire where we don't. Account.
Well, we have an an Amazon account.
I was gonna say, did we check Amazon?
Yeah.
Well, honestly, no, I have not, because I never think of Amazon. I probably should.
Yeah, we've seen.
Cause we have a using Amazon.
I'll check it out.
Yeah.
I I would prefer to keep that at that total though, if we can.
Uh, then moving forward to eight five zero 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 communications equipment.
Significant increase here.
That's what we would add to forty-five or forty-six for the.
Yeah, so.
I think you're communicating electrical.
Oh, I see.
So currently. Currently, our radio equipment. Is used, we got it from the county who got it from Genesee County. We've already had one of our portables fail, uh, to replace that is forty-four hundred dollars for a portable radio.
Didn't we, didn't we talk about new eight hundred megahertz radios or something, just to. Bunch of them.
That's what he's speaking of.
They're all sort of junk? Those were used?
No, no.
Oh, you got what, two base models?
We had in last year's grant with the county where the grant pricing that they got us. We bought two portable radios, that's all we could get out of that, and we had four pagers. That's just the minimally staff. People so they have communications, but our goal is is that we currently need to replace. These Motorola X T thousands that are probably fifteen plus years old right now. Uh, when they go, there's no fixing them.
These are all handheld or wired into the vehicles or what?
They're portables.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, to to get a mobile or mobile radio in your vehicle, it's about eight grand right now, sixty-eight grand.
So like in these.
One radio.
The the two new vehicles, those those are equipped with. Moved out of one vehicle into another one?
Right, and the used truck that we had, there was a base station in my office. That I disregarded that, there's no longer a base station in my office, cause we put it in the the used truck, so. It's more important to be there, so, but we need to, we need to look at replacing, we have applied for different grants, uh. But there's no guarantee on a grant.
So let me ask you this, under the same heading of the P P Es, would this be something that could be staggered?
This is staggering it.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, you, you know, you're basically looking at uh four thousand dollars a radio. And in communications equipment, that covers anything. If we have to have Tellurad come over and do an install for us, or fix something, or we need something sent in. The prices through the moon and back for radio equipment. Uh, cash would probably be all the way in here a little bit.
Yeah, we're not much further ahead of you. Our radios are, I don't know, ten. This is basically the same heading of computers, they're just never-ending.
Yeah, exactly, and I would say that the sheriff's department's got much newer equipment than we've got, cause it came used from Genesee County. Majority of it, I mean, we have four new radios over the last five years. So I would think that we need to put this in a rotation, just so we don't get caught with, you know. Motorola said that they will not even service the X T S five thousand radios anymore, and that's what we have the majority of, so it's out of. Out of date, if you will.
Nathan, will they do deals with us for the tower rental stuff part of that?
Not apples and oranges, that's cell phones versus.
No, I know, but even they still won't go outside the. Spectrum of cell phones and get into pagers or.
No, no, that the emergent, it's a whole different bandwidth, it's a whole different technology base, that's what uh. The county's actually been boring and putting up a new uh tower in between uh the twenty-six, isn't it, of your old uh county courtroom?
Oh, yeah.
In the breezeway there, uh, they're putting in a new tower.
Yeah, that's going up today, actually. It was either going up, uh.
So in the interest of moving right along.
Leave it at twenty, the next item is one I think we can uh look at, uh, so gas and oil, this is for.
Chainsaw.
Chainsaw gases, oils, uh, engine oil.
Can we lower that to like five hundred? We've only spent three hundred and thirty-four this year.
Yeah.
I mean, fifteen hundred seems like a lot if we've only spent three hundred and thirty-four.
I would feel more comfortable if we went to eight hundred. If that's doable.
And right now, I would say let's split the difference and go five hundred, because we can always amend it downstream. Um, right now, we have to give consideration that. Minus some math in terms of existing expenditure from the millage recruitment. We're still looking at a four hundred eighty-seven thousand dollar deficit budget.
Mm-hmm.
So five hundred. We're uh, we're a little ways away from ideal, so where we can scrimp a little bit. Um, Michelle, currently, we have activity of a hundred and eighty dollars this entire fiscal, and we're almost done on that G L. So we have, um, next item of eight six zero zero two zero, gas and oil E M S. Uh, was populated at twenty-two, and look, and your spreadsheet still remains the same.
Yeah, well, originally, last year, we had populated that as twelve thousand, and I had budgeted eighteen, I believe. Let me see what I budgeted last year.
Yeah, you're.
Seventeen.
Seventeen thousand.
And then we were what, three months in, Michelle, and we had to do a ten thousand dollar adjustment, uh.
I don't know exactly how.
So again, if we're going to not duplicate our efforts, if that's what this board chooses to do, then that number could come down. Appreciably.
Well, yeah, it could.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, there's, that's that's all things that need to be talked about that are out of my control, but I.
Nope, I got it, that's. So we'll just sort of leave it the way it is.
Almost five dollars a gallon versus it's three twelve.
Well, we have come down on gas prices, that's true, but where are they going next? Who knows? I mean, yeah.
So what's a fair number for that?
Republicans do.
Um, so we have twenty-two thousand remaining consistent in that.
So we're leaving it at.
We'll leave it at at twenty-two for now, uh, obviously, we don't have to uh populate gas and oil for a business anymore. So that's a a good reduction. Um, eight six one uh zero zero zero, which is transportation and travel, uh, was populated at two thousand. Uh, and you have it increased to three thousand.
Uh, yep, reason being is that, uh. Based on how we do it, fire committee and talking about tanker trucks and different things like that. I'm leaving that in case we have to go look at uh either a used truck or new trucks, uh. So that's something that's gonna come before the board or before the fire committee. That, cause we talked about that just briefly when you're out in Cali, uh, but we have to discuss that and where we're at. Budget-wise with the millage money that's left and the sale of the new.
Split it at twenty-five.
And I've already told Mark if it's outside of like basically a hundred and twenty mile uh radius. Um, it's exponentially cheaper to rent a car.
Absolutely.
Uh, with gas, I made it east Lansing and back, four hundred and seventy-five miles on the dot for a hundred and forty-two dollar.
You're mad.
You should have been with me on the return trip.
Ronald Precious is a good.
Yeah, so uh, electricity, um. I think that's remains, I I bumped it up a hundred uh to twenty-two hundred. Um, that's fairly static. Um, in terms of utility, that doesn't much sees a huge sway more gas-wise than uh electricity. Uh, I T internet, uh, nine two one zero zero zero, um, just trying to look at your.
We have the same.
Well, three thousand remains consistent.
Just amazes me that we can't get a better deal, just blows me away.
Well, and hopefully, we're working with uh a potentially a local provider that will bring high speed with actually a higher rate of. Uh, upload and download speeds, uh, that may come to fruition this year, uh, but that is uh the private sectors.
Oh, yeah, the whims.
Whims of the private sector, but uh, uh. Biden has put a a significant amount towards uh infrastructure expansion and especially in the fiber networks. Uh, refuse, um. You have constant at two hundred, I I increased it to three hundred, uh, because. I I did actually the calculate, that's principally for the cost at Southside, um, and that's actually at three hundred. Is puts what G F L's current rate is.
I don't, I don't ever see that bill, so I'm, I wasn't sure.
And coming into next fiscal, I've already heard rumblings in terms of commercial utilization, that that will actually have another jump. So you may be light at three hundred, but I think three hundred's a.
Why don't we go with somebody else? Who can we go with?
There's only one other one.
Yeah.
He's gonna get the best.
Their discount disposal or something?
Train to pick it up on the right day, so.
So, and right now, I mean, it's even with the reduction of potential, um, I think three hundred, this is one of the G Ls that's not really. Getting a break.
No.
Landline, um. Basically, every other department's increased, but we're, I guess that's one thing that we have to to give consideration to. I know that we went back through all the general fund.
This telephone landline is when we have to talk, call Michigan Telecom to do something for their landline.
Okay.
Otherwise, their phone bill gets done with the year-end journal entry.
We.
In that shared expenses.
Absorbed.
Yeah, we absorb it through the year.
So that was gonna ask, I was gonna ask that question, several of these are journal, journal entries, right?
Correct.
So landline, okay, hundred, fine with that, uh, nine two four zero 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 P. Um.
This is just.
Natural gas?
This is just the south side.
Just south side, of which, um, gas is ridiculous now. Um, and I I have it at four, uh, you have it at thirty-eight hundred, I think we're splitting hairs, I'd leave it at four. Uh, although, we may see a reduction, because uh, coming up on our next board meeting, there will be a proposal. Um, for increased R value on all of our wonderful flat roofs, so. Forecasting, that's what that is, uh. Moving forward to nine two nine zero one zero water and sewage use, uh, that is once again, um, south side principal. Um.
Go with somebody else on that.
Yeah.
Can we get votes on that?
Get you one. I don't think you want me to finish that.
Nathan, is that, uh, does that also include Station Three as well?
No.
No?
I don't think it does.
I don't think I've ever seen a water bill for stations.
No, it's not, some of the bills are paid principal by one entity, where I think we split gas.
D T E we split, may- maybe the city just pays the.
I, there's a, I have to go back into that contract, look at it, I think I'm gonna be speaking with uh.
Yeah, we 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 kind of brushed on it the other day, that's kind of what I was asking you about, cause. The D and R got a, I don't know, seven hundred and some dollar bill after this many years, and they'd actually give property to the pumping station up front. they'd actually give property to the pumping station up front. That was the agreement. Well, we'll just, we'll give you this property so you can put your pumping station. And now we're getting a bill because the administration that took care of that's gone. And I think it was a handshake deal and handshakes don't work.
There is a lot.
So three one zero 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 uh maintenance and repair building.
Do you have certain projects in mind on?
I, I do. We have uh two of the front doors out here are just in, actually both front doors.
The garage doors.
Garage doors are in need to be replaced at both stations. Uh, I'm looking at.
So that's four doors.
Yes, correct. And I got a quote for seventy-three hundred for replacing two doors. Uh, and there's just a lot of other stuff that I would like to be able to update some of our ceiling tile, especially in the north station that's actually got black mold and stuff growing on it. But I don't want to do that until after we get the new roofs on and then once we do that, I'd like to update that ceiling tile and that, especially the kitchen area. I'll show you a fire committee meeting. We actually have black mold growing up there that we can't, it's been sprayed, be sure.
Are you sure it's black mold?
Oh, yeah.
You had to test it.
No.
Uh, no.
To your point, Steve, no.
Okay.
And so that's why some.
That's obviously very serious.
Yeah, well, I guess.
So you have it funded because this is a, I mean, if there's going to be a lot of conversation in the the fire committee this for for time because of your request of trying to, we're down to basically thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Um. So you have recommendation of twenty thousand. And principally in there initially thirty thousand. So you're good with twenty?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we've done quite a few things and I think that uh with allowing us to get the garage doors, we've got the openers fixed here in the new garage door, so I think they work out pretty well.
Yeah.
We got thirty thousand.
So moving forward uh in the essence of time, uh vehicle maintenance, I think that this is one that is grossly.
That over.
I was gonna say thirty seems a lot.
Pretty much all new vehicles.
Yeah, but keep in mind, we still have a yearly service and maintenance that needs to be done. And we still have, we still currently have three old rigs. Okay, two are still in service. So, but we haven't even done the yearly service work and pump testing and that all comes out of this.
So on yours, you got twenty-five, on this one, you got thirty.
The annual service.
I don't even get a quote because R and R is the only company that does it for us. Uh, they've been doing it for years, so.
How much are they gonna charge?
I don't have the answer for that, Steve, right off the top of my head. I'll get it. I'll get last year's total.
Here's a spitball because there's always more than one show in town. Maybe this is the duplication of services. This, that was one big selling point in conversation of the city vehicle uh maintenance guy. Is that something that we can get in a contract through that same program?
I, I don't know what their city garage policy is because it's all done by their city mechanic. So he maintains their entire city fleet.
I'm, I'm, many ways a skin a cat. That's all I'm saying.
Hey, I'll go down there and throw a question to him. I, I'm not scared of that. I, I will.
Throw that at chief.
Why don't we take that down to chief's twenty-five thousand he's got?
Uh, vehicle maintenance, three eight, nine three eight zero 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 five K.
Yeah.
Uh, next is banking fees.
Yep.
You're gonna, it is what it is. Uh, God bless them.
So we had fifty-four, we tripled it.
Yeah, our current, our current activity this year is a hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Hundred and twenty, so.
So it's a increase to one fifty, hopefully encapsulate their grade.
Which one were you on, Nathan?
Uh, nine five five zero banking fees.
What'd you say you're putting it up to?
Remaining at one fifty.
Okay.
Uh, next is nine five five zero two zero dues and memberships uh was populated at twelve hundred and remains consistent with your spreadsheet.
But we're only showing activity to date of two hundred? Yeah, I, I haven't received the dues bills from Thunder Bay firefighters. Michigan Fire Chiefs and there's somebody else I haven't received, but they should be coming before the end of the year. So we'll get that.
Then before the end of our fiscal.
Yeah, though, but I have no, no control when they send that bill is our time to pay it. So uh, and we will be getting a, a membership uh to NFPA, which has all basically the firefighter bible in it. So we're gonna do the online version because it's cheaper.
Are we a member of the Michigan municipal league?
No, we're not. We're a member of uh Michigan Townships Association, that MML.
I knew the Townships Association, I just didn't know.
You're the chair.
I know that.
Okay, so moving forward in uh, so dues and memberships remains consistent at twelve hundred. Nine five six zero one zero data processing, that software.
What are you planning? What software are you planning on buying?
Uh, let's see, there is a, well, there's, there's two different. I attended a meeting with the city folks down down at the city station. I R O L is a program for online reporting. They've already adopted it. So when somebody go, when Andy Marshall goes out and does an inspection of a building and I'm presuming that down the road, we might have a uh fire inspector or C I R that would be able to go out and do these inspections. That reporting, that would be the software that I need to add.
We would need to buy that until we actually hired a person to do it.
Right, yeah.
But you don't have that on your budget.
It was.
So I guess what would we buy this year with the twenty-five hundred?
So uh, we wanted to get a software for uh vehicle tracking and different things like that, maintenance, uh supplies, you can get the talking with the folks down at the city, they're using this, uh, I can't remember the name of the program, but I'm just trying to lump that into a budget, budgetary item that we could add on and try to uh use a similar.
Quotes or anything?
No, because Robbie and I just started kind of talking about that uh on what they did to start tracking, you know, oil change, all the different things that you need to track and be responsible for.
Are we not tracking any of that right now?
So I'm wondering.
Once a year.
In the world of, I mean.
We only do oil changes once a year?
That's it.
Why don't we do by the mileage or the odometer like?
Because we don't ever.
Well, the problem with that is the problem, and, and also the problem with that, if you let a car sit for three or four months, uh, uh, the, the clock keeps ticking on.
Concentration, all that.
Well, the, the, the internal system on my vehicle. Uh, my other car that I have in storage, it started at fifty percent, it's down to zero. And it started.
Right.
So, so in the world of the high, the cutting edge world, the cutting edge of low tech, why do we need software? Wouldn't we just create a book?
Well, yeah, and so I guess, yeah, you can, you can continue to have that conversation because at, at the fire committee level, because if there's a, a means, then so be it, but these are, this would be a mechanism where you can just populate itself per the daily truck checks and.
Yeah, that we were, and we don't have to buy, we don't have to have the annual cost to.
What's code number is that?
Uh, well, it's on the one that I gave you, it's two oh five three three six nine five six zero one zero. So that's the deficit of using the spreadsheet that you've been using. Is that there's a plethora of GLs that aren't included? Or they're misleading, misleading in terms of their free chart up conversions aspect, so. Um, I, I mean, there's always data processing software out there. I think that this word of the time being taking twenty-five hundred to a thousand.
Yeah, because I don't even have that on my proposed budget. I don't even have that line item number.
No.
So I'm not planning on that, so I'd agree with you, Nathan.
Um, moving forward to nine five seven zero one zero, snow falling, ten, ten K.
Say leave it because you never know.
And, and not only that, you know, who knows?
And mother nature, she's a fickle gal.
Next, you know, I, I left it the same on mine anyhow, so.
So it remains consistent, um.
True to officers to pass through.
A pass through. Uh, safety compliance, safety data, SDS, this is.
What is that?
These are your three ring binders that you're, so I mean. Right?
Yeah, anything for.
Yes, Laura, for somebody. I have, you know.
Fifty dollars.
Find your queen.
It's all, it's all online. It's all the different plug covers and different things like that that we were supposed to have on a piece of equipment. None of that stuff has been purchased.
I'd say we'll leave it at five.
When the OSHA guy comes and, and looks at your stuff, that's the kind of thing they're looking for.
Physicals, binders?
No, not binders.
Plug covers.
Plug covers and.
So. Physicals herein, uh, I had populated knowing what the biomed cost was for everybody at twenty-one hundred and you have physicals at, on your new spreadsheet at five thousand.
So there's a difference here and I've been told this, it was a difference from the start. Bio care I have in professional contractual services based on your and I conversation, Nathan, that we should do that through.
That's how it started, but then we've already gone through that. I'm not gonna recreate that deal. So going back to physicals, what is an actual cost of bio care for all just in that instance of?
So I'm only going off what our conversations that if we had a new employee that's, Michelle told me it's around what, thirty-five hundred or something like that?
No, we've.
That's been a huge savings.
Giant savings, like still a hundred or something.
Yeah, it's like a thousand for a brand new because we're not doing all that testing that.
Yeah, yeah.
We had before.
So I would say if we only have room for one or two more employees, what would it cost us to have them go to the hospital and do their?
Well, then we also do the drug screenings for paid on calls and stuff out of there. So I would think you need like, what?
Four?
But I still think that the bio care physical should be in here too.
I, I did.
So I would do about five thousand.
Okay, so then that means that there's another line item under professional.
That we could take like.
That we're gonna, we're gonna reduce that by that much to them, right?
Correct.
But that's gonna go to the committee?
And you, yeah, you kind of did already. You went from eighteen thousand to fifteen thousand to cover that.
Right, but that means we'd be able to drop it down even more. So, all right, we can talk about that.
Nine six five zero zero zero, general liability, um, property insurance, that's fifty-five hundred. Uh.
Something with the bankers.
Yeah. So I mean, I, you know, we haven't adjusted, uh, yeah, just shy of five thousand. Is that something that we'd be looking at, uh, an increase of five hundred dollars or five thousand probably going to be sufficient for a general liability property?
And I really have no knowledge on that category at all.
You know, reduce that from fifty-five to five thousand. This as a placeholder, uh, vehicle insurance. Um. And.
And actually the bankers too.
Well, the pickup trucks will be cheaper.
Exactly. So I mean, the likelihood that you're consistent twelve will have a dramatic reduction.
Yeah. Pickup trucks will be, trucks will be dramatically lower, just the values will be significantly lower.
Just the, yeah, just the valuation.
I think.
Going from a hundred and thirty thousand dollars ambulance to, you know, maybe the fifty thousand dollar vehicle, sixty thousand dollar vehicle.
Yeah, and they're set up differently too. So I would say you could probably literally cut that. Maybe not half, but pretty darn close, yeah.
So we have a, a recommendation from a retiree that used to work in the industry of a, a reduction to seventy-five hundred dollar.
Good.
I don't have my, I don't have my license anymore, so I can't.
Respecting your status.
I'm just a civilian.
Um. And then moving forward into nine six nine uh zero zero zero, uh, shared public safety expenses. Um. I have it populated at zero because we pretty much, uh, this was one of those things. What are we gonna do moving forward?
So last year we didn't do the rent. That's why it went down.
Exactly.
So are we gonna keep on that same? I think we have to.
Well, I think we do too because there's all those ju- budget adjustments, the, the ledger.
Uh, so do we keep it consistent at thirty-five?
No, I think all the expenses went up that. So I think it needs to go up.
I, I left it blank just because I knew we needed to have this conversation. What is that?
Up last year.
So.
It was none last year.
Should we populate that?
It will get it. It's a year end adjustment. The auditors do.
So forty?
But those are.
I would do forty.
Yeah, so but that's just a, that's not an actual.
It, well, it is, but it's.
Write a check out.
But it's out of the general fund.
Yeah, it's one of those things that I've always, that, that's, I, I understand.
It's to show the sense of.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I get what it is and it's, it's just that.
It doesn't affect their cash flow.
Right.
No. So be cognizant of nine six nine zero 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 is already a contribution of the general fund, really.
So are you putting forty thousand there?
Forty was the recommendation. Cause as much as it is a pass through, it's still an expenditure for the general fund.
Yeah.
So fire prevention is three thousand, remains consistent on your spreadsheet.
Is that, I just wanted to ask, so we talked about in the future going forward, if we have parades to go to or stuff like that, that is this where like we could go buy candy or coloring books?
Can't buy candy. That still has to come out of our own pockets.
Like bananas.
I thought we were gonna know the budget for that this coming year.
I, I would love to because I know Nathan and I've spent a lot of dollars uh out of our own pockets just so we can go hand out stuff in the parades.
Well, I mean, I think we all have contributed to that, but I mean, I just wondered if, what GL would it go to if we?
So.
Could do.
My thought here is a, a lot of the stuff where we go, if we go to schools and do fiber prevention, we have to have stuff to take to them, right?
Matches.
Coloring books and pencils and.
Right, right.
It's, it's all, we didn't even do an order yet this year because I told the guys to wait towards the end of the year. I don't know if we're too late to do that.
Uh, please get it done by, pretty well, yesterday, yeah. Um, get it done like tomorrow.
Okay.
With, so we can get it.
An exact invoice.
Okay.
Um, let's move forward.
Okay.
Um, because we could talk about fun little things and classic badges and helmets that we'd love to give to all the little ones. Um, nine six nine zero two zero, fire EMS training. Uh, is, remains consistent with the, the first draft and this draft at four thousand dollars.
Is that like for sending people to training?
Yeah.
Well, now and Jim is gonna be doing some of this too though, right?
Right, but we still have to send people places to get certain trainings. Like if we, if we want to have a community risk reduction officer trained, uh, we need to send them someplace. So those are the things, somebody that's gonna be writing building plans and stuff like that, you have to send them to get trained. So I want to leave that there because I would really like to send some people so we can start doing inspections and.
So, but to that, I mean, our, because I, I'm a broken record of, we're now at a deficit budget of five hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Would it not behoove us to remain consistent at two thousand? Because then we can, I mean, or how many? Because we're not at a level of C I R officer.
You, yeah, we're not gonna be adding a community resource.
Well, and not at this point. I, I mean, it's gonna be a discussion at some point, but coming into this fiscal. Uh, I mean, we have it populated at two thousand. We only have utilized three hundred and ninety-four activity this year.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would hate to cut ourselves short on training. I mean.
We'll have to go somewhere else then.
But are we gonna have to pay for Ed's EMT training out of that?
Yep, nine sixty.
Three thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, we. That, that's my, so currently this year we have another what, nine hundred on top of four hundred? So we have just fourteen hundred. So that's the first year that we've had any fire EMS activity over the past three, three years is at fourteen hundred.
And I will point out.
So.
We have a training officer that's trying to, trying to send people or trying to get people trained so we can perform to a certain level. So he's just getting his feet underneath them. And when he starts wanting to send people here or there, so we can meet those community ga- uh, you know, guidelines of this is what we should be up to by now. Um.
So what are the guidelines? I guess I don't know exactly what guidelines you're.
Well, we really need to have a fire inspector going out and doing pre-plans of these commercial structures and stuff. Uh, it's just like marshals over here. We should have a fire inspector in there. Kevin and I are gonna go visit the place. Uh, I wouldn't even have a problem going to be trained up as a fire inspector. But I don't have time, so I would certainly send somebody that's gonna be around longer to utilize that training and, and be able to help this township for the next ten or fifteen years.
I do, I just have a question. Instead of us sending people off to get trained, what about if we just had Jim trained and Jim can be the ones that trains these people?
Well, there's Jim, some of the classes Jim can teach. Uh, there's some that he's not, you still have to be trained to a certain level to be able to train somebody else. So, so he would have to go to a train to trainer course or, so either way, it's not gonna be something that gets done in Alpena, so.
But, but in that same regard, because C I R officer is probably a little bit of a stretch, but an inspector may be something, but is that still consistent at two thousand dollars? Because we're gonna have fourteen hundred dollars expenditure this year and that's for an EMT class. So that's kind of the thing. What is, what is this board's direction for?
I guess what are our? I guess what are our priorities?
So.
So, I guess knowing more of what our priorities are for next fiscal, it's easier to budget.
Cause I, I feel that four thousand, I, I get that, those, those are two positions.
My priority is to give this township. An inspector that can actually go out and do these type of things and know that we have pre-plans made.
Of equipment, communication equipment, or a training officer, what is the priority list? What? Is P P E more important than this inspector? That's.
Well, I said.
Well.
I guess what I feel like we need to communicate.
That's not a comparison, that it's an apples to oranges kind of deal.
It isn't, because we have to use the same dollars to pay for both.
And that's something probably Steve, we should talk about.
Say, this is, this sounds like something that should, that should filter it out of the committee so we can bring it back.
Can we, can we leave that at?
Did reduce that to twenty-five hundred for the time being. If coming out of committee, there's a good reason to go back to four, then it is, uh, will be duly noted. Uh, next G L is nine seven four zero zero zero, equipment.
We need to add the A D in there.
So.
So three thousand or thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Do you take that from twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand?
And you have like a plan for what equipment you want to buy for next year?
I do, and I wanted to.
It'd be nice if we had a list of that. So when you bring it to us at board meetings, we know that you've already budgeted for it.
So.
So, there's a plan.
Yeah, on his spreadsheets.
So I, I do have it, Nathan has it, fire committee's gonna get a chance to review it.
Well, uh, I don't have this plan.
Well.
And everybody's got what's so far so good, but that's therein. I think just for time's sake, we have thirty, we went from twenty-five to thirty to account for that A D. Moving on to nine seven five zero zero zero, equipment and furniture. I had it at two thousand out of your, your rough draft, and then you increased it to three thousand.
Yep, uh, if we do get our sixth person, we're gonna have to get a. Probably another bed for that individual and.
A whole bed or just a mattress?
Just a mattress, yeah, and I think that we could get a fine. They don't need a different frame, I wouldn't think, or anything like that, uh, but I, we have a couple real disgusting looking. Chairs in our stations, and I would like to see us replace them with, uh. A leather style or something like that that are easier to clean, it's gonna be wiped down and sanitized between shifts. Cloth ones, not so much, not so good.
Ten cloth ones before you buy one leather one.
I know, but.
So we're on, we're on a Lincoln budget, and we're talking Cadillacs. I mean, they're both nice, which one? I mean, the wishes, the needs versus the wants, this, again, this is, this is a, a tight budget. I mean, I would love to say we can spend fifty thousand dollars on equipment and furniture. But the reality is, we're now at this G L looking at a five hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollar deficit budget.
So you're talking about like a recliner or a couch?
Yeah, we have to look at, at least replacing one, yeah, we talked about it, but.
Never got done.
It never got done.
Or get one at each, and then next year.
Well, that was the goal, that I would replace the two oldest cloth ones. Because the, the leather style, they're not leather, they're actually a vinyl.
Fake leather.
You know, but they can be cleaned easily between shifts, and you don't carry whatever it is that you just got in from that house. When you sit down or you can clean it with the wipes and, and, uh, be a little bit more sanitary. So, we're not getting exposure to something we don't need to be exposed to.
We've been there, we're definitely old.
So are we staying at three thousand or two?
I say two, I mean, this is a tight budget.
Like I said, we can always come back to all this. So now we have, this is gonna be part of the misnomer. But right now, we have it populated, and this is nine seven six zero zero zero. We have it populated at a hundred and ninety thousand. Which is really probably, some of that's gonna be within, I would. Oh, this year's expenditures being the, uh, remaining, uh, the Dean Arbor Ford trucks. So that wouldn't be cascaded, and that's just shy of a hundred and twenty thousand.
Would that be the ambulance?
Well, so this is, this is the, the, what it looks like is, where did I put that? So currently we have remaining two hundred and twenty-one, just for rough numbers.
And that includes the sale of the ambulance too.
So we have just rough numbers, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars that would be shown in this G L.
That we have not allocated.
But we, if we have the sale of one more ambulance, that's on top of that, so that puts us just north of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And I will point out here.
Twenty of it is going to be expended, and I would be in hopes in this fiscal.
Right.
And that's the Dean Arbor.
And I will let you know, I just got this text a little bit ago from Terry King that the second truck. Delivery date should be two twenty-six to twenty-three.
Next week.
Yeah, this, got a little bit ago.
Then you tell Mr. King to give us, uh, our invoice.
I will do that.
We can eliminate a hundred and twenty thousand that you have forecasted in next year's budget. But that being said, this is what's gonna throw this five hundred, because right now we're looking at five hundred and eleven.
If you take that to zero right now, it'll show where we are in the rest of.
So if we're at zero right now, we're still at a deficit budget of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars.
You mean for the township?
To the gen- I mean.
A general fund.
As, as this current budget looks.
In public safety.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, sorry, just in this.
So we have to figure out, before we even worry about this equipment mileage, how we're going to make up, how much is that?
Three hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Would you like me to get ahold of Mr. King and tell him to get the invoices coming?
That, that's, that's, that's a no brainer, but the, the bigger issue is. Right now, to make up three hundred and twenty-one, two ninety-five. Even if the general, the general fund can't shoulder that, so then we're gonna have to come back to what's proposed thus far.
But we couldn't use.
A finer pencil.
The sale of the ambulance?
No, like, no, no. That's got, has to go back into the equipment mileage.
Has to go back.
It can only be used for a fire equipment.
And we can't show it as a revenue, so it's not gonna offset, it's just purely going to be.
Now, the, the older ambulance, if we get anything or whatever we get for that.
Yeah, say, say you get ten K, you can put that back straight into, uh, revenue and then, uh, adjust it into. Like the equipment G L, but that doesn't offset. So, just, just food for thought, that's, I mean, that's. The only way to get out of that red in terms of the three nine, or three twenty-one, two ninety-five thus far. Is either internal, uh, control mechanisms or by general fund contribution.
I don't think your general.
And the general fund, it can't. I mean, that's, so, we're gonna be, it can start at fire committee, I think I may sign in on some of those meetings because. Um, we need to kind of really like said, sharpen the Bailey whip.
Do you have those meetings in this room?
Yeah, they're here at the board room, pretty much, so.
So it's something I could attend in the back of the room?
As long as anybody outside of, uh, the operating committee isn't in participation, it meets O M A standard.
I just like know what those meetings are.
So we do have one thing that's gonna fall off the cliff, but it's not gonna be of any consequence moving forward, is this will be the last year of the fire truck payment. Correct? This is the final year.
I will double check that.
The thirty-seven thousand, sixty dollars.
I think that's what we talked about last year, that there was like.
So I mean, for, for, and I asked the board, how would you like me to perceive? Uh, should I populate the expenditure of fire equipment millages as zero?
Well, right now, to me, it's easier to have it at zero, so we know where we have to balance.
Yeah, for, for this exercise.
Whatever amount we put in there, we can be in the red. Um, but we can't be more than what we put in there in the red.
So, the last two, so they're in, uh, interest paid, nine nine four zero zero zero. Uh, is at two thousand, um, and miscellaneous interest charges have never been used. Uh, and that really completes the expenditure side. Um, and so I'm going to, uh, save this as is and print it for all parties.
So it's still gonna put us at somewhere around that three twenty-one, right?
Uh, right now at zero, we're at a deficit of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars.
So that's where I think we have to figure out what the priorities are for next year. What can we, what can't? So, are we talking about this at all?
All right.
The options, uh, no, not yet, we're gonna refine that, we're trying to do some refining on that, uh.
What's the fire committee?
Oh.
That's for Nathan asking me to take that too.
Yep.
Definitely needs more detail.
So, we can hammer that out then, hopefully. We'll probably have to put a little bit more time on our next fire committee meeting.
Everybody wanna have fire committee meeting, they need it scheduled too.
Yeah.
How about tomorrow, I threw out some dates to the fire committee? Would that be acceptable? See who can all do what? Morning or afternoon, cash is best for you.
It's all about cash.
It will.
How long are we thinking we're gonna need?
Mark just said a long time.
Two hours?
Yeah.
Half of the, the board of education meeting.
Yeah, you'd be done.
We'd be done.
I gotta roll, roll set.
Would you be able to go to that tomorrow instead of me, since I'm down a person?
It might be.
To the fire committees, are you?
Well, we're just coming up with dates, we're not coming up with a time to, we're gonna do it tomorrow, right?
No, no, I'll, I'll. I'll send out some potential dates.
Thought you wanted to meet tomorrow. That's why I was asking.
No.
Okay, never mind, yeah.
Yeah, and if, if, if it's during the day and I can swing it, then yeah, by all means.
I just thought I'd ask.
When this date comes up, if somebody notifies me, it's something.
Yeah, it'll be.
I've redone with Mark.
Yep, we're done.
Okay, I got it.
Thanks. Good job.
Okay, um, so with that being said, uh, I guess he, uh, is going to be sending some proposed dates. Uh, we'll wait for, uh, the fire committee, um, but we know we have, uh, uh. A, a, a fruitful conversation forthcoming as to, uh, the mechanisms and abilities. Moving forward, uh, I'm printing on, uh, the public safety with all the changes that we made today. It will be done for you before you leave. I'm also making one for Chief Hanson. Uh, with that being said, uh, is there, uh, any public comment? If so, there's no public comment in person. If there's any public comment, uh, online. I see a Mr. Schulwitz, uh, with the press corps. He is the press, well, now they have a second reporter, they have a second reporter. Yeah, and she got the, the board of education meeting last week. Um, so that being said, uh, I see no public comment online, there is none in person. Uh, is there any other discussion amongst the board for the good of the order? Seeing none?
Are we gonna set our next budget meeting, or are we?
I'll, I'll shoot it out.
Or we can do it at our, Monday, we have a board.
We have a board meeting Monday, so I'll bring forward, uh, our next proposed date. Um, which is gonna be truncated as to the fire committee's potential to really kind of get going. Um, with that being said, uh, we'll discuss, uh, upcoming budget hearing dates, uh, or workshop dates, sorry. Uh, at Monday's normally regularly scheduled meeting, tonight is the M T H after meeting. Seven P M at Wilson Township on King Settlement Hall Road. Uh, with that being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn. We've got a motion by Laura Ellery Summers, supported by trustee Polley. Uh, of adjournment, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Uh, opposed the same, meeting adjourned at four forty-six.